Good evening. It is my pleasure to call this Monday, April 17th, regular board meeting, rescheduled from April 13th, 2023, regular board meeting of the School District of Haverford Township to order and to welcome those of you who have joined us here in the Oakmont Building and the robot, the Ford robot that we'll soon get to meet, and also to welcome those who are watching us on the YouTube stream. This meeting is being recorded for later viewing. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, board members will read the district's goals and strategy statement.
Sorry. The mission of the School District of Haverford Township is to educate and to inspire a community of lifelong learners who become well-rounded global citizens. The pillars of our educational system are: Our school environment is safe nurturing; excellence in education is a shared responsibility and partnership with all district and community members; whole child development is vital to our educational system; supports and conditions exist whereby all students have opportunities to grow and excel in the areas of academic, technical and career, and social-emotional learning; and our decision-making process is student-centered and student voice is valued.
The 2020-2025 district goals are as follows: Social-emotional wellness. Produce a community of empathetic and resilient learners with skills to socially and emotionally flourish. Prepare contemporary citizens. Modernize and expand learning experiences to prepare students as critical thinkers, problem solvers, innovators, and designers within a complex global society. Diversity and inclusion. Establish a culturally diverse and inclusive educational experience that develops socio-cultural proficiency.
Thank you. And now I'll ask our Board Secretary, Ms. Martha Q., to call the role.
Dr. Crispin.
Here.
Mr. Feinberg.
Here.
Dr. King.
Here.
Dr. Larson.
Here.
Dr. McKay.
Here.
Mr. Schwartz.
Here.
Ms. Vitale.
Here.
Ms. Snodgrass.
Ms. Wedeman.
Here. Ms. Snodgrass is traveling for business. Dr. Rishi.
Sir. Good evening. As everyone who is here knows, this is a regular meeting of the School District of Haverford Township Board of Directors. This is a meeting that was originally scheduled for Thursday, April 13th, and was rescheduled for today, Monday, April 17th. Pennsylvania Sunshine Act requires that the school board post a copy of the meeting agenda on its website at least 24 hours in advance of the meeting. The April 13th meeting agenda was posted on the district's public webpage in the afternoon of April 12th. Because there was a slight change to one of the agenda items, that agenda was removed from the public webpage, corrected, and, to our understanding, reposted. At approximately 10:30 Wednesday evening, we received an email from a community member informing us that the agenda was not available on our public webpage. When we looked, we confirmed that the usual link for the meeting was not available on the public webpage, and as a result, we postponed the April 13th meeting and re-advertised the meeting for tonight. We continue to review what occurred with board docs, with board doc settings, that prevented the agenda from appearing on the district's public webpage on April 12th. I want to thank everyone for their flexibility. There were a lot of people who were planning to be here to present or to be recognized in some way. I want to thank everyone for their flexibility in being able to convene this meeting tonight so that the district can continue with its business in an orderly and timely manner. And I also want to thank Ms. Conroy Smith for bringing this to our attention on Wednesday evening. If anyone has any questions, please feel free to email me or contact me directly in my office.
Thank you. The next item of the agenda is the minutes. I will accept a motion to approve the minutes from March 16th, 2023, regular public board meeting.
Larson moved. Question second.
Moved in second. Did any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved. And now we have our report from students. We will start with the middle school reporter, Colton Crowder.
Hi, my name is Colton, and I go to the middle school. I hope you had a good spring break. I played video games online over break. Sixth grade is almost ending soon. I like EOLI, but social studies is my favorite. This week is the first week of spring sports, and all of the teams are playing. Thank you.
We're missing our high school reporter, so we will catch up on the events at Haverford High. Oh! Oh, that is above and beyond. That's great.
Thank you, Colton.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mia D. Wald, and I thank you for the opportunity to share some updates on Haverford High School tonight. My apologies for not being able to be there in person. Staff and students returned this week from a much-needed spring break. The Friday before break was celebrated with a school-wide dodgeball tournament held by the National Business Honor Society, which was lots of fun to watch. Students have officially entered the last quarter of the school year. While everyone is excited to have summer on the horizon, students are also preparing for keystones, AP testing, and Nocti exams for our med careers and technical education students that attend DCIU. For seniors, the fourth quarter is a bit melancholic. While I can't wait to celebrate Decision Day with all of my peers on May 23rd, the news of graduation speaker auditions and senior prom are all little reminders that high school will be ending in just a few weeks, 56 days for those that were wondering. College decisions were all released, and I am very excited to announce that I will be attending George Washington University and studying international relations this fall. Haverford's clubs are certainly not slowing down in the fourth quarter. Student Senate is currently holding sign-ups for the April blood drive, and it is my goal to beat my personal record of 114 sign-ups. With Mental Health Awareness Month coming up in May, the National Honor Society has plans to decorate the school with inspirational messages and plan an assembly to spread awareness about the many resources offered by the school. Before break, the World Affairs Club traveled to Drexel University for a model global economic forum in which we proposed plans for ending unemployment in the Middle East and North Africa, which was tons of fun. The choir also traveled down to Disney over spring break for their music competition and received a marking of superior, and singers Owen Cruson and Katiri Simmons were recognized for their outstanding solo performances. The Haverford Young Dems and future Republicans also wrapped up their voter registration drive and awarded one lucky winner with a private parking spot. I'm not sure which one's better, having a private parking spot next to Mr. Dennehy or being able to vote in the upcoming elections. The high school's robotics club qualified for the world championships this past weekend and ended up ranking overall 14th out of 127 teams in the Mid-Atlantic District. The one and only other time that we qualified for the world championship was back in 2014. Good luck at the Worlds in Houston. The spring season also means that the spring sports are underfoot, and our amazing baseball, softball, lacrosse, track and field, tennis, and boys volleyball teams are starting off the season with a bang. While spring break was certainly relaxing, our athletes were still working hard and having meets, completing team workouts, and meeting with coaches. The boys volleyball team is currently ranked third in this state, and our Lady Ford's cheerleaders will be featured on ESPN on April 14th and 17th and May 6th and 7th. Haverford also has two Delco Players of the Year: Basketball player Caroline Dotzy and swimmer Katia Ursulino. Time is certainly flying by, and it's hard to believe that it's almost May. With exciting things in store for the rest of the month, I can't wait to see all we will do this spring. Thank you again for allowing me the time to speak tonight and go forwards.
That was great that she was able to remotely participate. The next section of our agenda is for the superintendent's reports. I will turn it over to Dr. Rishi.
Thanks, Ms. Wedeman. I'm going to take things a little bit out of order and take that second item first so that we can hear from the students involved with our robotics club. While many of us were enjoying some downtime during spring break, robotics team 484 was busy qualifying to go to the world championships, which they will attend this week. In addition to the team achieving high rankings in the competitions in which they participated, they also won the prestigious GM Industrial Design Award. The club advisor, Cassie Pezza, a high school graduate herself and a former member of the robotics team during her tenure in the district, is here with members of the club who are going to highlight for us some of their accomplishments on their journey to the world's championship. Looks like we've got quite a few of the students here this evening. Yeah. Come on in.
Wow, you are out.
Sure, why are so many people in this school? We're gonna kick some of them out.
Phil, how you doing?
Jordan.
Mine?
It's okay.
It's okay, worry about it, worry about it. We can see it.
Hi, everyone. I'm Colin. I'm from Team 484, one of the team captains, and I'd just like to say thanks to everyone on the team for helping out so much and making this like dream a reality. It's really been a long season. I appreciate everyone's hard work. We just qualified for Houston after winning our first competition and getting the Industrial Design Award at this competition on the screen at Ben Salem. It really means a lot and really excited to go on this trip.
The students really worked hard this year. They were all very engaged and actively... Everyone was very active in participating in the team. It was a team effort, and their hard work, dedication, perseverance, resilience is evidenced by us finishing first place, third place, and second place in our three competitions. So we've had an outstanding season, and it really is all because of the students' hard work.
And I'm looking forward to going back to the world championship. I was one of the lucky few my freshman year that got to go. We got the entire team there this year.
So this is our robot on the screen.
Are we going to see the...
Yeah. The challenge this year was to pick up cones and cubes and place them on different like terrain levels. So the best challenge was to pick, put them high. We developed pieces to be able to extend and reach out to pick them up and place them where they need to go.
The robot's already in Houston. Its name is Zenith. It's in a crate, and we'll take it out on Wednesday and fix it.
Currently, not too much fixing needs to be done.
Was there a specialized crate that you had to use to ship that?
Yeah. Oh, it was special. So it was built back in like 2000 by our old head mentors, Ms. Fairman and Mr. Preddy. It's got a green M&M on it because Mr. Preddy was obsessed with M&Ms. It's got our old logo from 2014 when we qualified then, and now our robot's in there.
Terrific. First off, congratulations. Very excited for all of you and all of your hard work. Can you talk a little bit about the process, like what this looked like from the beginning of the season, how you got to where you are now?
Yeah, so every year around the start of the new year, this year it was January 7th, the company first releases a new game with the same general idea where robots have a task and they compete against other robots to win. Every year it's different. It has different challenges. Last year it was shooting giant tennis balls into a net, and it's been like this since the year 2000 where we started. This year it was just a new challenge for us and a big change this year from last year. So we've all worked really hard, usually working six days out of the week, 6:30, 9:30, usually staying late. A lot of hours are put in outside of robotics as well with designing it virtually and just it takes a lot of effort from everyone to complete a robot in two months, eight weeks? Yeah, so that's what we've been doing for the last eight weeks.
So how much of it is building, like constructing the components versus programming it?
Yeah, so on day one, we start building with different prototype ideas, and we look at those ideas, how they work, and eventually like evolve those pieces to be at a more competitive state where they can perform better on the stage. So we're always constantly building. I don't think a meeting went by where we weren't building something. So it's just a lot of, a lot of hands-on stuff.
How many teams were overall?
Yeah, there's 127 teams in our district. There are going to be 600 teams going to the world championship from all around the world, a lot of different countries, different continents. We are one of 27 teams, about 27 from our district to go. So yeah, it's been a lot of, there's a lot of teams outside of our district, but 3,300, as John Murphy says.
And is it remote control?
Yeah, so you're, no one's on the field. Everyone is behind it. We have like something like this with a joystick over here and a computer with, allows us to drive it and move every piece remotely. There's also 15 minutes or 15 seconds at the start of the game where everything on the robot is controlled by lines of code, so no one's touching, interacting with the robot. It just turns on and knows what to do autonomously.
Okay.
Yeah.
And how big is the robot? Like we see the Ford here. How does your robot and competition compare?
It's a 25 by 33 diameter or dimensions, and it's about like four feet high. It's 112 pounds. Yeah, it's, it's bigger than you would think. But...
Moderate size.
Yeah.
I'm gonna have to look it up on YouTube and see how they compete, but are the robots like bumping into each other?
Yeah.
Is there a strategy on like getting the edge of the line to...
Yeah, so at our first competition, we had a lot of issues with things not working properly, so we resorted to defense where you would intentionally bump into the other robots and stop them from being able to score. So there's a lot of contact, and the bumpers that we put on the robot, it's just like pool noodles and coverings. Those have taken a real, a lot on their, a lot on them, and it's like every, every match we try to fix it, and we have to do different things to fix those. So it's a lot of contact, yeah.
All right. A battle.
Can we follow you on social media? Is it gonna be like live streamed or something on Instagram?
Yeah.
Okay. Tell us, how do we follow you on social?
Instagram is FRC Team 484.
Do you want to say that again into the microphone?
Yeah, yeah. We have, we have our Instagram account at FRC Team 484, and I think we have a YouTube account, which hasn't been updated very recently, but it's RoboForce484, something along those lines, and all the matches will be livestreamed on YouTube. I'm not exactly sure what it'll be on, but we are gonna be...
Probably actually gonna be on Twitch.
Probably, yeah. It will be on probably Twitch. It's not Mid-Atlantic anywhere. Yeah, on Twitch, probably on the First Inspires, one of those channels, in the Johnson Division. So yeah.
We'll look for some tweets and updates as the week goes on.
We'll get those out.
And you, you fly out tomorrow, right?
Yeah, we got about half, more than half the team flying out tomorrow in different flights just because of lack of notice, and we qualified about a week before everything had to be planned. So thanks to Cassie for getting all that planned. It was a lot of hard work, but...
And to the parents that stepped up and helped make the reservations and... Well, thank you for adjusting your schedules in order to be, to be here this evening. It's great that you've got such a terrific turnout and that so many students are going to be able to participate. We're wishing you lots of luck, and we're excited to hear the results.
We'd also like to thank the school board for your generous support over the years and especially this year, so thank you very much. We do appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're gonna do a demo with Blue Henry, right?
Oh, are you gonna be, yeah, get in the picture.
Okay, I was like, who do I... How, should I go in there?
Are you the historian?
You're in there. Just smile. Just smile.
And you guys are gonna do a demo, right?
Wait, what?
So I was like, just smile. And you guys back here. Nothing weird about that.
He's skipping so fast.
Oh, wow.
Brakes are sounding a little hard.
Right, it's more rugged than I would have thought.
Thank you again and good luck.
Thank you. Right. We're gonna get into the rest of the business agenda, but if you want to get ready for your trip, you can, uh, you can head out now.
Good luck.
He was a big fan of all the transport.
He was the student reporter for a while.
I don't know why they didn't want to stay and talk about the audit.
It's when you, when you register for, when you register for first, you assign a number. As long as the team exists, it will maintain its own number.
Uh, I just have a few additional, um, information items to update the word in the community. Uh, the first being the Highland Lane property, which we, uh, discussed at our last meeting or last meeting in March. Uh, just to give you an update that multiple meetings between attorneys have occurred. However, we have yet to come to an agreement of terms. So there, at present, there is no signed agreement of sale. So therefore, the ninety-day period of due diligence has not been initiated as of this date. Uh, another topic of interest, residency verification. Back in December, uh, the Policy Committee moved forward, a policy to the full board pertaining to the enrollment of students. And one of the changes that is going to be enacted as a result of that policy revision is in requirement now that parents or guardians of all students who are currently in fifth grade and currently in eighth grade who plan to attend our schools next year as sixth and ninth graders uh, will verify residency and provide, uh, up-to-date contact information. Communication with directions about how that, how you can meet that requirement will be sent to parents and guardians of all of our current fifth and eighth grade students, uh, tomorrow morning. Another item on our agenda this evening, you will see there are a number of donations that are being made. Those donations total a little over sixty-seven thousand dollars from a variety of groups. Once again, our students and staff will benefit from the generosity of organizations such as the Education Foundation and our school PTOs. Thanks to the Ed Foundation, our buildings will now have additional funds to assist those students in need. And thanks to our PTOs at three of our buildings, we will be, uh, create, putting in additions to playground equipment. We thank the Ed Foundation and PTOs for their dedication and support of our students. Uh, Ellen Kranek, President of the Ed Foundation, is here this evening. And Ellen, if you would come to the podium and just tell us a little bit about the collection of those funds that the foundation is donating for, uh, students in need.
Right. Dr. Ruchi, thank you so much. Thank you, Board. It's nice to be here with you tonight. I'm Ellen Kranek. I'm the President of the Haverford Township School District Education Foundation. And we found ourselves in an unusual circumstance between 2020 and 2022-ish where we really didn't have the ability to have any events due to the pandemic. We weren't, you know, getting people together and raising funds the way we normally are because our real mission is to raise funds in the community and then grant it back to teachers and students and community members for programs in all of our district schools. So during the pandemic, we kind of said, what should we do? We, you know, we have resources to do things, but not our typical things. Um, so we ended up raising money for families in need in the district. We heard, you know, tell of situations where families really were struggling in financial need and needed extra support. So the Education Foundation was able to raise about forty thousand dollars in nine months and the intent was that, for that to be gifted back to families identified by school social workers that needed help. And we got through about half of that money and then Giant stepped in and had a really nice donation for the school district to help with, with resources for families in need. So, uh, Dr. Ruchi has worked really closely with the Ed Foundation to come up with a solution which we think will, you know, serve the purpose of the initial donations given to us. And that is to create a Principal's Discretionary Fund in each of our school buildings. And we're also gonna give a little piece of money, uh, to the Honor Society Gift Program that they have every holiday season. So really appreciate your partnership, Dr. Ruchi. Um, it's really good to be able to see this money go where it should go and in the hands of, you know, the people who are closest to the students that might need the help. Thank you so much.
Thank you again. We look forward to...
Thank you, Anna. I need my PR support here. So, um, we're going back to our regularly scheduled fundraising now and this Saturday is the Twilight Run. So thanks for that. Um, we hope that we'll see y'all there. I thank the board members who have reached out to support us in this event and, uh, it's our largest fundraiser for the year. So five o'clock Saturday at Haverford High School. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, and the final item in the Superintendent's Report section, uh, we have a review of our audit and Carl Hogan of BBD is here tonight to discuss the 2022 Audit Report, uh, which we will ask you to accept this evening. The board has been provided with a, a copy of the audit prior to, uh, this discussion.
I'll be brief to spare everybody, yeah. The exciting content of the audit report. So, um, tonight, um, there's a seventy-page document on the, uh, on board docs. I've just picked out a couple pages to kind of go over tonight in terms of the highlight, um, 2021, 2022. Um, the first three pages I've put here tonight is the Independent Auditor's Report. Um, the Independent Auditor's Report is, um, you know, about, uh, two and a half pages long of, of which the, um, you know, they've kind of changed around the format than in previous years. Um, but as you can see up at the top here, the most important thing in the Independent Auditor's Report is the opinion paragraph basically stating that the numbers presented by management for the year ended June 30th, 2022 were fairly presented. Um, there's different sections of the audit report which outlines, um, what management's responsibilities are, what our responsibilities are, um, what responsibility we're taking for the different sections of the audit report. But ultimately, what we want to focus on here is the opinion paragraph up at the top indicating a clean, unmodified audit report. So we could skip ahead to the fourth, um, PDF page, which is page fifty, which is right here. And this is the Budgetary Comparison Schedule, um, for your general fund. I think it's the most important schedule in the whole audit report. Kind of gets shoved to the back. Um, I've said this before, we don't audit the budget. We only audit the actual numbers on the right-hand side. So hence, it's, uh, what we call Required Supplementary Information. Um, but for the year ended June 30th, uh, 2022, budgeted revenues were a hundred and thirty-three point seven million dollars. They came in at a hundred and thirty-eight million dollars, um, for a positive variance of four point four million dollars. And we're gonna see on the right-hand side there is the positive variance is made up of, um, of all the revenue sources. So you have your local source revenues, um, which are predominantly made up of your real estate tax collections, um, state source revenues, which are your subsidies, um, and reimbursements from the state, and then your federal source revenues, um, which are, you know, predominantly related to your title programs. And in addition for the current year, you also receive semester funding through the COVID programs that the federal government had. So as you could see, uh, local source revenues were better than anticipated due to additional, um, more than anticipated mostly realty transfer taxes, taxes and the collection of, uh, better than anticipated collection of real estate taxes. Um, state source revenues, um, there was a one-time, uh, receipt of PlanCon rental sinking fund subsidies from the state that wasn't originally anticipated in the amount of about one point five million dollars. And then your federal source revenues, um, you had some COVID money that you didn't anticipate during the budget process in addition to some medical access monies, um, that were received more than budget. Um, so overall, there's, um, that makes up a majority of the four million dollars of the hundred and thirty-three million dollars that was budgeted, um, or more that was more than budgeted. Um, total expenditures, um, this is what you can control. Um, you have less control over your revenues than you do your expenditures. You put out a, a budget at the beginning of the year related to your expenditures and you have a hundred and thirty-four point five million dollars that was budgeted. Um, expenditures came in a hundred and thirty-three point one million dollars for a one point, um, three million dollar variance. So that's great. When you're looking at one point three million dollars, um, less than what you budgeted on a hundred and thirty-three million, which is, you know, much less than even one percentage point. And then also you had a eight hundred thousand dollar budgetary reserve that didn't need to be used because your expenditures came in better than anticipated. So during the budget process, you budgeted to use one point six million dollars of fund balance. You actually added four point eight million dollars of fund balance because of predominantly that one-time revenue sources that came in, um, that we talked about. Um, fund balance at the beginning of the year was seventeen point seven million dollars. Um, you added about five million. Um, twenty-two point five million dollars of the general fund fund balance at year end. So the next slide is the same information I just presented, but also I want to point out, um, we spend, uh, especially the past couple of years, we spend a lot of time auditing the Capital Projects Fund. Um, the district's going through a capital project improvement program. Um, so you're gonna see during the current year, um, nineteen point five million dollars approximately of capital outlay um, within the capital projects. Uh, so this was pretty much wrapping up, um, the ha- the high school projects. Also, you're, um, still going on with the new Linwood Elementary School. Also, there was, uh, capital projects at the Chatham Park and Cooper Town Elementary Schools related to various projects. And during the current year, you also issued seven point nine million dollars of new general obligation debt, um, for these projects. So at the beginning of the year, um, you had about eighteen point three million dollars of bond proceeds. Um, you expended, um, more than what you brought in, eleven point one million dollars and you still had seven million dollars, um, available, um, at year end for the various capital improvement program. The next slide. So we just went over the revenues and the expenditures. Now we're gonna kind of go over as of a point in time, as of June 30th, 2022, um, what your, um, assets, your liabilities and the excess of those liabilities being that twenty-five, uh, point seven million dollars we just talked about in fund balance. So as you can see, the general fund, most of your assets are predominantly made up of cash. Um, you have liabilities, your biggest liability, um, your current liability is related to accrued salaries and benefits. Um, teachers work through June 30th. Um, they get paid out through the summer and there's certain benefits that accrue through June 30th and not paid until after year end. And that makes up, uh, most of what your liabilities are at year end. And then your fund balance, um, down below is segregated into different categories. Um, the state of Pennsylvania or PDE only allows you to have eight percent of your next year's expenditure budget as what we consider unassigned. So what the board needs to do is they need to commit fund balance, um, for one-time, non-recurring expenditures. So in the case of the district, since they're going through a capital improvement program, um, they have historically put the, uh, excess of the eight percent of the next year's expenditure budget into, uh, committed fund balance for capital projects. So what this allows the district to do is, um, to not have to go out and borrow money for those types of projects that may be smaller in scope. Um, I think we call them the summer projects or summer improvement projects. So it doesn't, you know, meet a new elementary school or it's not a huge high school project or a huge, um, project with, like, you're going through now, but at the same time it allows you the flexibility to be able to draw upon those funds for those, um, projects that may not, you know, be big enough to go out and go out and borrow additional monies. So that leaves you with the unassigned fund balance of eleven million dollars, which is exactly eight percent of next year's expenditure budget and then you have fourteen point six million dollars, um, available committed for capital projects. The next slide is, um, we also, as part of our audit, we audit the Food Service Fund and, uh, the Food Service Fund is exactly what, um, it's the cafeteria operations of the school districts for all the different buildings. Um, so during the current year, um, the food service, uh, net position increased by eight hundred thousand dollars. Um, this was kind of a one-time windfall year for the school district. Um, they received really good reimbursement rates related to the free, uh, the free meals that were being received through the SSO program, um, due to COVID. In addition, there was additional monies that were received for supply chain assistance and emergency costs um, because of all the issues that was going on in terms of, um, you know, operations and getting food and so forth. So, um, the state, uh, uh, provided additional monies which allowed the Food Service Fund to have positive operations during the year. And then there is the Internal Service Fund and all the Internal Service Fund is the operations or the fund balance of the district within the Delaware County Healthcare Trust. Um, so the district pays money into the Delaware County Healthcare Trust and then the claims, the self-insurance claims are paid out of the trust. And during the current year, basically the monies that were put into the trust, um, you know, were about the same amount as the claims for the year. And then at the end of the year, the district has about twelve point five million dollars of fund balance within the Delaware County Healthcare Trust. And, you know, they're required to keep a certain amount of monies within the healthcare trust because there could be a year where you have bad claims or experience and, you know, this is kind of in line with what the healthcare trust, um, wants you to keep on hand for any kind of, um, you know, experience that might be, uh, you know, worse than expected. I'm gonna skip over the next page and I'm gonna go right to page thirty-five, this page here. So this is, since you're going through your capital improvement program now, what you're gonna see here is all the debt that the district has outstanding. Um, most of it being, uh, current, um, you know, related to new debt that's been put out in addition to, um, refunding debt, you know, you take advantage and they know the district is constantly working and currently working with as a financial advisor to look for opportunities to refinance some of this debt. And I think currently the district's looking into refinancing that series of 2009. And as you can see down below, um, those are the two new issues for the current year. You had the, um, six point eight million dollars related to the ongoing capital improvement program and then also, um, you took out bonds of about one point one million dollars for the purchase of school buses. And then up at the top of the next page, which is the last slide, this is just outlining what your current debt service is. And as you can see, you work with your financial advisor and they wrap around the debt. So it's a consistent, you know, debt service that the district is, uh, you know, incurring on an annual basis. So in 2024, um, this is when your, uh, debt service kind of tops out related to the new capital improvement program and where it's gonna be at twelve point nine million dollars, um, for the foreseeable future after this 2023 year. So in addition to, um, you know, the, going through the audit process, um, the district also has to meet different financial or reporting requirements. And the district met the reporting requirements with PDE, um, gonna meet the requirements with the Federal Clearinghouse and then finally related to, um, Emma and the bond and the, uh, and relate to your bonds and filing that as well. Anything, anything I missed?
Time for comment or questions?
All good news.
It's a good report to get. And, yeah, credit to, um, our district's Business Department for the, um, management of the, of the budget and the financials that get us to this condition. I think, um, having a surplus is a strong result to have. Um, you know, you think back the year ended 22, it was a interesting time with different, um, COVID supports and a lot of uncertainty around just operations. So I know we prepared a, uh, you know, somewhat conservative budget and it's, you know, um, a good result when we get more revenues and, and fewer expenses. Um, that surplus is a benefit to the district's financial condition is allowing us to be able to go to the bond market and access capital for the, um, for the capital improvement projects that we have underway and also allows us, um, an opportunity now to think about some of the other projects and things that we might want to undertake um, as we have our facility feasibility study and looking at a new round of improvement projects across the district. Um, having some resources in hand gives us that flexibility to, um, to act and to be able to, if we need to raise more debt, go to market with favorable terms and a strong bond rating. So, as you said, all, all good results.
And just hopefully, I mean, if, you kind of remember the past three years have been, you know, a little strange. If you think about back to 1920, you put a budget together, but then you weren't in school the last three months. Then you put a budget together for 2021, oh, we're gonna be back in school in September, then we weren't back in school. So then all those variances on the right-hand side. So this is kind of the first year you put a budget together where it kind of went to plan. I know we had those, you know, local source revenues, but if you look at the past two audits, the expenditures have been all out of whack now because of what you did. It was because, you know, things didn't happen as, but it all happened to the good and has allowed the district to build a nice reserve, like you said.
Thank you so much.
That's it for me.
Okay. So the next section of our agenda is for public comment. The board values public comments as an essential component of school governance that adds information for the board's deliberation of the important and complex matters that we, um, fall that fall under our purview. Public comment is an opportunity for members of the community to address the board. Our meetings provide an opportunity for us to model good government and civic engagement for our students. Our public comment is divided into two sections. This first section is for comments on tonight's agenda. The agenda is published on our school board, our school district's website in the school board section under Board Docs. Residents of the township may, in advance of the meeting, sign up to make public comment by emailing publiccomment@haverfordsd.net in order to give everyone an equal opportunity to speak. And per our board policy, you will have three minutes to address the board. At the three-minute point, a timer will sound, and you will be asked to conclude your remarks. Please begin your comments by stating your name and confirming whether you are a resident of Haverford Township. If you have materials to distribute, please leave them at the end of the board table. Your name and the topic of your comments will be recorded in the meeting minutes, and your presentation is being broadcast as part of our meeting. If appropriate, an administrator or I will follow up with speakers to discuss or respond to the issues raised. We had one person sign up for this portion of public comment, and that is Helene Conroy Smith.
Do you bounce back? Hello, I'm Helene Conroy Smith. I live here in Haverford Township. On Wednesday, 4/13, the agenda was not posted, so here we are on a Monday. How did not one of you not catch the posting of a meeting for the agenda? This is an important meeting. You have posted John J. Coyle, you're going to enter into a contract with him. And it says, "Our report will be prepared for your exclusive use and possession of the report by another party not related to this assignment does not obligate us to present testimony concerning the information, analysis, or conclusions contained in the report without prior consent." I'm not sure if everyone's aware, but the school district has entered into a contract with, well, will be, or has entered a contract with an attorney to sue some of our homeowners. At the March meeting, you agreed to call for legal contracts and put it out there. I'm not sure if you hired the attorney yet. I'm not sure who is hired. It doesn't say, but you are entering now into another contract that's going to look at tax assessments of homes. And I want to say that Haverford Township Commissioners already determined that the house value markets were not consistent. On 10/13/2020, the Haverford Board of Commissioners voted to withdraw standing as an appellant in regards to an appeal filed as part of the countywide reassessment pursuant to the resolution 2187-2020, if anybody cares to go and look. In general, the property assessments were not completed with uniformity by Tyler. I'm tired of our tax dollars being moved into litigation. This is unfair to our taxpayers. Now we're entering into another contract and expending my tax dollars. And again, is this a frivolous lawsuit? This is maladministration. When we look at these things, why aren't we looking at what we're doing to the people here? We had a man come up here and talk about how he paid his taxes and he's not getting a refund several weeks ago. Also, why wasn't the independent audit report available on the agenda tonight? Part of your duty is to place that information on the agenda. Under Sunshine Law, specifically mentions agenda info must be posted on a website, and enough information must be provided that a reasonable person could figure out what we will be talking about and how this will impact future voting. So that money, all that was presented tonight, you're going to vote on some things that are going to impact us as taxpayers. And we have a right to know. And again, why are you hiding this information from the public? Why aren't you posting it? What are you doing? Thank you.
Typically, we post the audit on the agenda after it has been accepted by the board. The board is not approving an audit. They're accepting it.
The next item on our agenda is the board committee reports. We have
I said you, it says here that you should email before 3 o'clock. I didn't realize it was required. Can I make a public comment to an item that's been mentioned?
I'm sorry, we have a policy of having people submit their request.
It doesn't say it's required to be submitted, so I didn't realize it was necessary as a prerequisite to making a public comment. It just says should. It doesn't say it must be done. I've never done this before either, so I ask your indulgence for three minutes, please.
Just a moment, please. Can I, can I ask if your item is on tonight's agenda?
I believe it's already been commented on. It's about the proposed purchase of the Hyman Avenue property, which was commented on
But that is not, that is not on tonight's agenda?
I'm sorry, again, I've never done this before.
That's okay.
Public comment items on the agenda. It was mentioned during the meeting today, so I figured it was an appropriate item to address.
We have no agenda item for 201 Highland Avenue tonight. We can, if I, can I ask you to sit down, and we will follow up with you after the meeting?
I'm not sure I must stay the whole meeting, frankly. Please reconsider.
We'll follow up with you.
It's a residential area, please. People work very hard to earn their right to live in that neighborhood. And I can't think of any appropriate use other than as a
If we get your name and number, I'll follow up. I will follow up with you. We'll get it.
Thank you.
At the end.
At the end. We will ask people to sign up.
Sign a piece of paper.
Sign a piece of paper so that we can follow up with you. But there is no business item tonight pertaining to 201 Highland Lane. Dr. Ruchi, at the beginning of the meeting, described the situation that we're in, where we have not entered into the agreement yet, the, the potential sale is still under negotiation between the various parties, and therefore, the 90-day due diligence period has not yet begun. Okay, so we will go to the board meeting report. The Curriculum and Pupils Services Committee, Dr. Laura Crispin, will report on. Thank you.
Thank you. The Curriculum and Pupils Services meeting was on March 23rd. The meeting began with a status report of the strategic and comprehensive plan. We received an overview of the collaborative process used to create the strategic plan and highlights between, highlighting the difference between the strategic plan and the comprehensive plan, the latter of which is required by PDE. We received an update about progress on our three different goals for preparing contemporary citizens. MTSS has been implemented. I should say, this is a brief highlight. It was a very long meeting, but a very comprehensive presentation. So this is just some of the highlights of what we heard about. If you want more detail, certainly watch the recording of that meeting. So, preparing contemporary citizens, MTSS has been implemented, and we had a presentation about it at the February Curriculum Committee meeting. The goal is to add in tier two and tier three supports for those who need it. Elements of Effective Lessons is a new instructional strategy, and that has been implemented with ongoing training and evaluation. More modernized methods of assessment and how this can be incorporated into curriculum were discussed. On our goal of diversity and inclusion, the district is studying proportional representation in gifted and higher-level courses. Schools are reviewing data to identify, I should say, school administrators are reviewing data to identify barriers and to try and identify more students with a goal of focusing on socioeconomic status and other subgroups. There's been ongoing professional development on helping dependent learners become independent learners. The Grow Your Own program is making progress in partnership with the DCIU and our own HHS leader, Mr. Leon Smith. He is the Grow Your Own developer for the district. The high school sent a group of students to the Future Educator Sessions at the DCIU, and we've heard some about that at previous meetings as well. And then our final goal of social emotional wellness, MTSS SEL Resources, that's social emotional learning, are being used for a trial period to see if they are effective, and they should be adopted more broadly. The SEW screen, excuse me, newsletter is going to be moving to a webpage, and the screener that we implemented using My Sabers is active in third, sixth, and ninth grades with the goal of continuing to screen and intervene in these grades. We received a overview of the PSSM results. The PSSM is the Psychological Sense of School Membership. It's a survey administered in fourth through 12th grades. It is in collaboration with University of Pennsylvania Graduate School of Education, along with many other school districts who participate in PSSM. Sense of Belonging is important because it increases students' engagement, it reduces behavioral incidents, and it increases academic achievement. The survey includes 18 belonging-related questions, along with some basic demographic information. Since fall 2020, the district has maintained an overall sense of belonging, but there are differences across subgroups that need to be understood and considered. Overall, the sense of belonging decreases from elementary to middle school to high school, which is a national trend. And to address a low sense of belonging, teachers are receiving a lot of training using research-based practices. Then finally, we received a status update about the gifted program and curriculum review. This review was done by the Chester County IU. Consultants, over the two-month period, with participation from a range of stakeholders, focused on four key areas: screening and identification, program design and delivery, professional development and communication. And the CCIU will provide a final report of their review soon, and that will be distributed among the leadership team and the gifted staff. Thank you.
Thank you. That was a robust meeting.
I know. It was a two-hour meeting, and I got it down to like five minutes, so I feel like I touched on the highlights.
Thank you.
It was great.
We also had Finance and Facility Committee meeting, and Dave Schwartz will update on that.
I'll try to keep mine short as well. By the way, it's from the meeting that took place on March 30th. We had another one scheduled for April 11th, which had been postponed based on some of the new information about the Highland property. So we'll have that one at a future meeting. Couple of things, the CB Development of our capital program has been getting much shorter over the course of the, of the past year, as things are coming online. Linwood is on your completion, waiting on a couple of additional things of paperwork. High School Phase One has been closed out. High School Phase Two is almost closed out. A couple of minor invoicing issues and AV work for the fitness work, work for the fitness room. Chatham and Cooper Town, the Chillers, I believe they are coming online. There's some additional wiring that's required for the one in Cooper Town, but the one for Chatham's coming online. I think everybody did, actually. I'm not totally sure, but they're about 60 to 70% done. The window A C units are being taken out. Rest of the work will be done during the summer. Couple of minor things, we had to do some additional work for crawl space under the school at Chatham and some additional piping at Cooper Town, but those are coming along, and the finances for both are still looking pretty good. We also have a presentation on the district, from Kevin DiPaola, about the transportation system of district. Couple of stats for you, the district transports 4,865 kids on a daily basis, and we have 51 drivers who are all accident-free for the year. So that's very, very good news. We have currently 36 propane buses and 34 gas or diesel buses. That number will be 46 propane buses by the end of the year. We purchased 10 new buses. Those will be coming in very, very soon. The, but the, the maintenance and bus parking lot has been upgraded to include new propane tanks, so we keep them, them fueled. And we're starting a new, a new program from our old, our old scheduling system to, to, to some called Transfinder that's been into the board some time ago. It'll have some long-term savings for us over the next few years. We also had a construction project, a summer project update from JR, but some of the things that are happening over the, or the, the, some of the capital programs happened last summer, and they're happening in the next two years. The whole list is up in Board Docs. I'm going to go through all of it. Just a couple of minor things for, for the board. Some of the things that will be done in 2024 will be, the funding for that will be requested this year based on lead times and so forth. So some of those items may be coming up in, in the future. Doing a lot of things, doing things with gym doors, new bike racks, energy efficient upgrades. One thing I'm excited about is upgrading kitchen equipment, so we can get rid of styrofoam trays and move back to the plastic ones. So it's a couple of things that are kind of on the, the agenda moving forward. We also had a proposal for some legal work for the, for our, for our appeals process, which we received one proposal for. We had an update on, on borrowing as well for our bonding. Moody's will be updating our bonding pretty soon, which has been having a higher, a higher rating as we've had for the past couple of years. A lot of that stuff was discussed during, during our, our last meeting about some of the bond swaps and everything. I won't go into that and bore everybody to tears, but that is all going on very, very nicely. Our, our, our borrowing, our borrowing amounts are in good, are in good shape. We have a preview of the audit, which you heard about this evening. And just a quick note, our May-June budget presentation will be on April 27th. That will be, I believe, our, our, our preliminary budget. Our final budget will be our second meeting in June. Oh, and finally, I'm sorry, one last thing. We also had a food service presentation from Chartwells, where they presented some pricing options. We are now realizing a profit, actually, for food services, which is typical of cool districts. We had not in years past. It's a nice change. Food proposals, the recommended proposal is no changes to pricing for next year. And that's all I had. Hope those were short enough.
All right, thank you. In the finance and facilities portion of our agenda, item A is the bill list. I will welcome a motion to ratify disbursements for payments totaling $542,175.46 and approved disbursements for payments totaling $946,995.76.
Hornberg moved?
The tally's second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. Item B is for change orders. I will accept a motion to accept the recommendation of the project architect KCBA and Associates, Inc. and owner's representative CB Development Services, Inc., and authorize the change orders totaling $47,298.39 as listed.
Schwartz moved?
King second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
These are the change orders I mentioned previously for Cooper Town, just some additional piping and wiring.
All right, thanks. Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Change orders are approved. Item C is the 2021 to 2022 independent audit report. I will accept a motion to accept the 2021-22 independent audit report as prepared and presented by BBD LLP.
Okay, moved.
Larson second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Most, the audit is, the acceptance of the audit is approved. Item D is elementary playground projects. I will accept a motion to approve moving forward with the following playground equipment purchases by the home and school associations for Manoa, Chatham Park, and Lidwood Elementary Schools during the summer of 2023.
Crispin moved?
Schwartz second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Do we get to see pictures of what they're getting?
Yes, we, we will. At Linwood, it's actually the mats that are underneath swings, so they're just adding to the swing set that is there. At Chatham, they are replacing pieces and also adding on to the number of pieces that they have with that installation scheduled for July. And at Manoa, they are adding a unit to the equipment that they already have, and that is scheduled for installation late August. It might be the beginning of September, but we'll get pictures for you as well.
Thanks to our PTO's and HSA for the funding for this.
And to all the community members that support it, yeah.
Were students able to give any input into the type of equipment that we purchased? I know they have very strong opinions whenever you're placing playground equipment.
Yes, they do. Each of our principals involve, involve students in the selection.
That's great.
I think that was my favorite part of the Linwood project, was when we got the student input for the whirly gigs and climbing the bobs and stuff like that.
There's, there's close to $50,000 in contributions from the PTO, so just want to make sure that we send our thanks to the folks for, for all that, all their contributions here.
That's a lot of bingo nights and fundraisers and activities to generate those funds. All right, so it's been moved and seconded and well-discussed, so all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. The next item is the HTSD EF donation. I will welcome a motion to approve a donation in the amount of $17,929.45 from the HTSD Education Foundation through the Haverford Help from the H T S D Education Foundation through the Haverford Helping Neighbors, H H N, to create a principal's emergency discretionary fund and support the National Honor Society's Holiday Gift Program in twenty twenty-three that will be divided and dispersed as listed.
Feinberg moved?
Crispin second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
This is really wonderful. Thank you.
And again, a good community effort organized by our ed foundation.
Absolutely.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. Item F is the Food Service Management Company contract renewal. I will accept a motion to approve the renewal of the Food Service Management Company Cost Reimbursement Contract with Compass Group by and through its Chartwells Division for the fiscal year July one twenty twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Schwartz moved?
Crispin second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? So can we, um, we've had agreements with Chartwells before, and this form of um agreement is a standard state form, is that correct? And a requirement of an annual?
Yes. When you go out for R F P, um, although you've, in essence, have the ability to have a five-year contract, each year you must renew it. You are not allowed to simply flow through the five years. Every year you must go through the process and renew it.
Okay, so that's, that's standard here. And as Mr. Schwartz mentioned in the finance and facilities report, um, the administration did receive some options about incremental increases to the meal prices and opted not to recommend any, so no changes to the pricing um for student meals. Any other questions or discussion?
Um, I noticed in the um, in the contract that some of the areas are initialled, um, and some are left blank. So will those uninitialled areas be initialled in and by whom?
I'm pulling that up right now. Yes.
Or is it possible they, those ones aren't applicable to us?
Or does everything? Some may not be, but that one, I see the one is. And it may just be where it identifies the position. It has a, a name. I just wanna see if it's... Understand all of it. And then the, and then the initial will go in. Yep.
So we're good?
So that's a kind of administrative process to finish that, but the terms of the contract are as outlined and as provided by the state.
Um, Ms. Wedeman, and just another point of possibly administrative task. So there are certain things that I'm able to delete, like the initials. So perhaps they were just lost when it was uploaded? Like right now, I can click on one.
Yeah. A lot, we sign them after they're approved. Like if you look at most contracts, you will not see our names on the, on the agreements until after they have been approved. But like in, in the case here, there is a signature on behalf of Chartwells, but ours would be signed afterwards.
I just wanna make sure that it, when this document is sent, that it's a locked PDF. That way I shouldn't be able to edit it, and neither should the person receiving it.
Will do.
Okay, any other comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. Item G is a tax assessment appeals appraisal services proposal. I will accept a motion to accept the proposal from Coyle, Lynch &amp; Company to provide real estate tax consulting and valuation services.
Crispin move?
Moved. Anyone second? I'll second. Any discussion or comments? Um, this may be a question for our solicitor. Um, in public comment, we heard a characterization of the appeals process and why the district has legal representation. I'm interested in your characterization of, of why the district engages uh this kind of service.
Sure, so for years, the district has relied on Mr. Coyle and his firm to provide various levels of appraisals when properties are in litigation for assessment appeals, whether that has been a property owner-initiated assessment or the district has not done so in the last two years, I believe, but if it was a district-initiated assessment. This item is actually brought before you at our recommendation because there has been no written um updated written agreement with Mr. Coyle's office for a number of years. So we are recommending that this occur so that we do have a clear understanding with his office as to what we could expect if we were to need his services.
Thank you. Any other comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. In section seven of our agenda for human resources, item A is retirements and resignations. I will accept a motion to accept the following retirements and resignations as listed.
Feinberg moved?
Vitale second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
That we have a teacher of thirty-two years retiring, so, thank you.
Ms. O'Brien at Chatham Park? Congratulations.
And we, we will, remember, we do have our meeting where we invite all of our retirees to come, you know, come together to be recognized at one point in time. We will continue that practice.
And I will mention, not um from tonight's agenda, but because this is Ms. Q's last meeting with us before her end, is that correct?
One more.
One more?
Yes, there's another, there's another April meeting.
One more meeting. I will save that then. Okay. Um, so we have the moved and seconded for the current retirements and resignations. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. Item B is non-acceptance of appointment. I will accept a motion to approve the following non-acceptance of appointment.
Vitale moved?
Crispin second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes. Item C is appointments, and it has a lot in it. Accept a motion to approve the following appointments as listed below contingent upon receipt of all necessary clearances, including Act one sixty-eight of twenty fourteen.
Crispin moved?
Moved and seconded. All in favor? I'm sorry, any discussion? There's a lot going on here, including the summer personnel lists and um some of the activities. Good to see all the people um continuing and growing in their positions with the district or joining the district. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item D is leave of absence. I will accept a motion to approve the following leave request.
Crispin moved?
I heard a move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. In section eight of our agenda for people's services, item A is out-of-district educational services contracts. I will accept a motion to approve the following educational agreement for students attending out-of-district placements for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year.
Feinberg moved?
King second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item B is an educational services contract. I will accept a motion to approve the following educational service contract for services provided to students and/or staff with the district.
Crispin move?
Larson second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? This is for speech and language therapy. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. In section nine, curriculum and instruction. Section A is the P A E T E P Agreement for Observation Evaluation System. I will accept a motion to approve the agreement with Edge Link for P A E T E P Electronic Teacher Evaluation Portal for a one-year term starting July first, twenty twenty-three at a cost of seven thousand five hundred eighty-five dollars.
Crispin moved?
You guys are like, time, yeah. All right, so moved.
I'll take a second.
Second, moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Is there gonna be any training provided to administrators? I didn't see anything in the contract. Um, so we're purchasing a, or access to a system, but what about the training?
Yes, thank you for asking, because these systems can be notoriously complicated. They, uh, principals were actually, administrators were involved in the um identification of this software system as well. And there are onboarding as well as ongoing trainings that will occur. Um, we're starting out with a smaller portion of the staff to get to know what's needed, and they can also make future recommendations for training when we roll it out to everyone.
Okay, great. Um, and then I'm seeing this as a one-year term. Um, assuming this is all information that goes into a digital system, teacher evaluation is, as you know, a multi-year process. So what happens to that information, let's say year two, um, the consensus is not to renew? Like what happens to all of that data?
We do retain uh rights to access the data, although we won't be able to use the system, you know, anew for uh the new school year. We do anticipate that this would be the first of several years to transition over to this just based on the selection process that we went through, uh, looking at what we've been using and the input from the stakeholders. But you never know, that's why we're doing it small scale to start.
Thanks.
And this is a replacement of another?
Yes, we currently, yes, we currently use a different system, and, and uh we believe that this one offers uh better capabilities and uh more convenience and a more thorough product.
Okay. Any other comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And this is one we've gotta tend to pretty quickly here. Student educational excursions. I will accept a motion to approve the following student educational excursions as listed below.
Larson moved?
Schwartz second?
Moved and seconded, and this is the robotics team, so. Any discussion?
Just good luck.
Yeah.
Can't wait to hear back.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The robotics teams go into Houston. The next section of our agenda in which we have topics is uh eleven for other items. Section, item A is school board secretary appointment. Uh, I will, will accept a motion to appoint Robert Cochran to serve as school board secretary effective April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three.
Feinberg moved?
Vitale second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Dr. Rishi, can you introduce who Robert Cochran is?
Certainly, I believe he's still here, he's still here in the room with us. Uh, Bob will be serving as our interim uh business manager. He comes to us with a number, a, a quite extensive experience, number of years, most recently in the Unionville Chad's Ford uh school district where he served as the business manager there. Uh, so we have already started working with Bob and look forward to uh transitioning through this next phase.
All right, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. Item B is the Delaware County Community College trustee reappointment. I will accept a motion to approve the reappointment and corresponding resolution for Elizabeth A. Shepherd-Robidom to serve as a trustee to the Delaware County Community College for a term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-nine.
Crispin move?
Vitale second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I, is that a roll call?
Is, do they need a roll call? Oh, they do, okay. Ms. Q, could you call the roll for that vote?
Dr. Crispin?
Yes.
Mr. Feinberg?
Yes.
Dr. King?
Yes.
Dr. Larson?
Yes.
Dr. McKay?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Ms. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Snod, Ms. Wedeman, I'm sorry.
Yes.
The vote is eight to zero with one absent.
Thank you. Will the next item also be a roll call vote? Because it also is for the, or it's Delaware County Intermediate Unit, that does not, doesn't need the same kind of formality? Okay, the Delaware, next item is the Delaware County Intermediate Unit Board Member Nominations. I will accept a motion to approve the nomination and corresponding resolution for the individuals listed to serve as board members to the Delaware County Intermediate Unit Number Twenty-Five for a three-year term beginning July first, twenty twenty-three and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
King moved? Crispin second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Do I need to abstain from this one? No, I'm serious. Do I need to abstain from this vote since?
You can choose to if you wish.
Okay.
Do you want that noted in the, in that you're abstaining?
I mean, it just feels weird. Yeah, um, I'll abstain from voting.
I just wanna thank Kristen for, you know, for continuing to serve on the D C I U board. It's uh not a small-time commitment, so thanks for that.
Thanks, Larry.
And you, um, your abstention is not uh indicating that you no longer want to be in that position, right?
I feel really awkward about it, it just felt strange to vote for myself.
If you voted nay, that would be, that'd be a different story.
No, I'll keep going to the meetings and thank you for your support.
Yeah, thank you for your service. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? One abstention, motion passes. The next section on our agenda is for public comment on other items. We had two people sign up, Angela Urso.
Hi, I'm Angela Urso. I live in Haverford Township. I'm here tonight to talk about the adolescent mental health crisis happening now. Covid was trauma to our children, and when we came back to school, it was not normal. They were following a ridiculous schedule of in and out of school all week with their faces half-covered, eating behind plexiglass, having to stay six feet from their peers and even further from their teachers. And even though many parents voiced their concerns then, their concerns were dismissed and even laughed at by this board. Covid was never addressed. Neither students or teachers had a chance to come together as a school community and express how the pandemic made them feel, making them feel even more isolated. They were forced to deal with masks and expected to know how to navigate the virtual school world. Your D E I initiatives are not working. These children are meaner than ever to each other and bullying is an all-time high, specifically around issues of race and gender. I really, really want you to hear that because it's really, really bad in our schools right now. I see signs all over that say hate has no home here, yet I've never felt so much hate in our schools and community. Because of the turmoil due to the extremely poor choices that were made in the past three years, our children are suffering. Parents are requesting evaluations only to be denied. The evaluations that are being done are being done poorly and hastily. Parents are not being informed of their rights and blindly trusting this very broken system. I do believe the district is in over their heads with the amount of children needing support right now. If a child is suffering from an untreated mental health problem, how are they learning? We are already behind academically, and this contributes to the mental health problems. The waitlist for mental health treatment is six to twelve months unless you can afford a hundred and fifty to two hundred and fifty dollars out of pocket per week. Parents are desperate. What tools were these children given when they returned to school to help them through this? When the teachers came back, many of them scared to resume their jobs. What supports were put in place for them? Just like there are many children suffering from mental health problems, there are teachers as well. Teachers that are being abrasive to students, discriminating against kids, and outright breaking the law with very little consequences. What supports do you have in place for teachers and staff? Are teachers and students needed a safe place to process their feelings? I'm here tonight to ask the board how you plan on dealing with all of these children in crisis right now. Our kids are slipping through the cracks, please hear that. Our kids are slipping through the cracks. Why has incompetence become acceptable? Why do we continue to lower our expectations constantly? Teachers are not following I U Ps and five oh fours. For these kids to not have the tools they need is not equitable at all. This is a very serious situation, and sadly, it feels very much like the district is just watching it happen and do nothing. I asked the board to please come up with a plan for the damage that was caused by the poor choices that were made, and I urge parents to please check your kids and make sure they are getting what they need from their district. Thank you.
There were um some concerning points there. I asked the administration to follow up with Ms. Urso and, and have her work with the administration. The next speaker who signed up is Helene Conroy Smith.
I think some people here tonight will be a little happy I'm gonna talk about um Highland Lane. My name's Helene Conroy Smith. I live here in Haverford. Um, Landillo Road housed, once held the, housed the Lanark School. Um, and that was sold to Haverford Township um well. and that was sold to Haverford Township well before 2013. I'm giving a little history lesson here. We've had the Brookline School, that's sold to Haverford Township for $1. Now it's going to be a park. Dr. Rishi, you told the taxpayers it was too costly to renovate, and the building, and back in 2018, there's a video of you saying that. We spent, we're going to spend $4.3 million on a parcel of land, okay, that houses a pool that's going to need to be filled, a home that's going to need to be bulldozed, and a historic building currently. What's going to happen with that? And we're also going to need to do some work with the township because there's a park between Cooper Town and that parcel. That home was up for sale June 2022. It was removed from the listing on 11/22. It was relisted on 2/15/2023. Why wasn't this discussed way earlier on? Why was it just brought up at the last meeting in a rush to make a sale? The Oakmont Building was once a thriving school, and it can return to do so if we really do need a sixth-grade center, if that's one of the rumors in the community. I propose usage of that space. And if we need to, we move out the administration staff and put them into a rental on West Chester Pike. Why are we spending $4.3 million? Plus, it's going to be another four, and I'm generous with my estimate for the bulldozing and all that. It's going to be probably another $4 million, and then if we need another build. Our town is not growing exponentially. Our enrollment is up because we closed many Catholic schools. We built a new community up at the reserve. We also took every open parcel of land in Haver Town and placed one to three homes on it. Our town is overcrowded. And what we're seeing, though, in the census report, there's 26.2 million children from the ages of 12 to 17. But yet, ages one to five, there's only 22.9 children from ages one to five, I'm sorry. So looking at how things ebb and flow and where we're going to spend our money, is this real, I understand what you're trying to do, but we've also had parcels of land that we've taken and we've sold. And do we really need to do this? And I'm, I'm really concerned, so I'm here on behalf of you two. I hear what you're saying. I'm concerned about where my money's going. Thank you.
Thank you. And the topic of the facility plans will continue to be addressed in our regular board meetings, in our Finance and Facility Committee meetings. We have a facility feasibility report. There are recordings of those meetings from November and December that you can watch and see some of the recommendations from our engineers and architects who did an assessment of the district's facilities and space constraints and made some recommendations. And we will look forward to the administration being able to present some recommendations on priorities and next steps. With that, do I have my executive?
Do we have time for a public comment outside of the end items? Sorry to interrupt the end.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Okay. Can I ask how many people attended tonight not knowing they were supposed to sign up for a public comment and wish to make public comment tonight? Two of you? Okay. At the discretion of this chair that I sit in, I will allow the public comment. Again, you have three minutes. Please state your name and confirm your residency in the township.
Thank you for your indulgence. I appreciate it. My name is Brian Carroll. I live in Haverford Township. I made my comments earlier about asking you to think about all the hard work that people put into being able to afford to buy a home in the Cooper Town area and why they moved there, and what this proposed project would do. And I say this proposed project not knowing what it is, but in my mind, I can't imagine an appropriate use for that property on Highland Avenue other than as a residence. If you look at the width of the roads, you look at the shrubbery, you look at the layout of the residential housing around it, you look at all the blood, sweat, and tears that people put in to get there, one of the nicer neighborhoods in this township that is, that really is a hallmark of what this township can offer people, it will be destroyed. I understand you have a greater good that you have to satisfy, but logically and practically and economically, I just can't see the sense of starting at $4.3 million for a property that doesn't seem well, well, well-appropriate for any kind of construction of other, anything other than a house. I also want to say this, and I don't mean to be belligerent or bellicose or threatening, but this is not going to be an easy road for the school board. There is going to be resistance, whether in the form of litigation, form of political action. People, I've talked to my neighbors, are shocked. They feel betrayed, betrayed. All the taxes they pay, and let me just say this, not many students, not many children in that area even go to those schools. They pay for private schools, but they pay the taxes, and all we want to do is be left alone. And it's inconceivable that there's no other parcel of land that would be more appropriate in this township for any kind of project that you have in mind. I invite every one of you to come to my house, have coffee, and I will walk you around the neighborhood. I will demonstrate to you how this doesn't make any sense. Now, if Councilor Dobbs wants to come and have this be a sunshine event, is that what we have to do, complying with state sun? We'll, we'll comply. I'll take notes, okay? And we'll make them public. But please reconsider this folly. It is not going to work. It's going to divide the community, and it's not a practical approach to what your problems are. Thank you.
And the second gentleman?
I'll state it again, and my name is Michael Listowski. I live in Meadows Lane in Haverford. I'm not going to repeat what's already been said, but I'm going to digress for a second and thank you all for being here. I haven't been to a school board meeting in many years. Being here tonight makes me appreciate the burden you assume doing this, and I thank you for it. I just have one question, and it may seem somewhat random, but I was surprised to see that the student population has increased here when it's decreasing everywhere else. And when you see the national demographic trends show that we have a shrinking population, especially among younger people. So I would just urge the board, looking long-term, to consider what that means for us. You know, you may build a school and find out you're going to sell a few years down the road to become something else. I've also heard rumors that people from outside the township come to our schools, and I wondered to what extent that increases the student population. I noted in the meeting, you mentioned you were doing some due diligence. Specifically, you were going to investigate the residents of incoming fifth graders and incoming ninth graders. Those would be students entering our middle school and our high school. Why isn't it more expansive than that? That's a question, and I'm not sure if it is a give-and-take or whether I just make a statement, but I'm genuinely puzzled by that.
Thank you.
It's not a give-and-take, Sarah, but I, and I do believe you put your name in everything.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'll, I'll get back in touch with you.
Well, thank you.
Alright, the next section of our agenda is for board reports. I will start with Dr. Crispin.
Antoinette's not here, so should I give a plug for the policy meeting?
Oh, yes.
I feel like I, I can't.
You swing the roll.
Yeah, I can't let it go. Policy meeting, 7 o'clock on Thursday this week. And a number of policies are coming back that we discussed about earlier for further review, and then some new policies that we haven't reviewed yet. So we'll be here 7 o'clock on Thursday. Other than that, no report.
Thank you.
No report.
Yeah, I'll just say that the advocacy day is tomorrow. So I know a couple people here are going to be attending that virtually once again this year. We still haven't gotten back to, to in-person, spread the tease that they gave us earlier this year. So I'll be at that. Look forward to that. I also just, there's questions about enrollment and everything. We do have some enrollment reports that have been done in previous facility committee meetings. I don't have those on me. I do apologize. But I'm sure we could let people know what meetings, those were discussed at. They have been discussed. It is puzzling, but, but, but enrollment has, has gone up significantly over the past 10 years or so. But other than that, like I said, we can look at that, and everything is still on the table for discussion, and.
Thanks. And, and I will just kind of public service announcement. Board docs is a searchable website, so if you put in demographic, demographic study, enrollment, it will come up with different meetings and attachments that were presented at those meetings.
And we are reevaluating our enrollment, our enrollment study.
Regular demographics.
Really, I'm sorry, I'm getting the terminology mixed up. Thank you.
I had to think twice if I'd already commented on this, but we haven't had a meeting since March 28th. So on March 28th, I went to the Wellness Committee, which again is a time when there's faculty and staff representatives, and we had a middle school student representative there with us. And just a reminder again of how hard our faculty and staff are doing to work with students. So I know a larger report is coming in a month or so, so I won't do, do more, but it was, it was a nice meeting to be part of. I also attended the legislative, Delaware County Legislative Meeting, April 12th. Mr. Schwartz has already mentioned that tomorrow is Advocacy Day. And also, just for all the board members, May 19th in the morning is the Legislative Breakfast. If you are able to, to come, it's going to be filled with lots of opportunities to talk with legislators and our local community leaders. And it is something, though, that you do need to RSVP for, so you've all received an email about it, so please RSVP.
Thank you.
So just wanted to thank you all again for your vote of confidence to continue representing Haverford on the DCIU board. I've really enjoyed, you know, working with the DCIU admin as well as my Delaware County Board colleagues there. I've also had the opportunity to be the Chair of their Education Committee, which has been, you know, very fulfilling work and helped me bring me really up to speed with the tremendous and expansive work that DCIU does to support our students and our community. Just a few DCIU-related updates. We're hoping to have a contractor voted on for the expansion of the Falcroft Campus, which will increase the size of the Practical Nursing Program as well as upgrade some of the existing facilities there. We're hoping to have that contractor vote at our May 2023 meeting, so just in a few short weeks. Also, a plug for the Delaware, Delaware County Technical Schools applications. We've already accepted, or DCTS has already accepted or received 86 applications from Haverford, so that's very exciting. And that's as of 3/28, but keep those applications coming. There's a lot of great programs there to prepare students for careers in all sorts of rewarding fields. Also want to make a plug for DCIU's, or DCTS's Newly Formed Teacher Preparation Academy that prepares students for careers as educators. As you know, we have a critical shortage of educators in Pennsylvania. The number of teachers, or prospective teachers applying for certification in the state is decreasing steadily. And this year, you may have seen in The Acquirer, the number of teachers, the number of people who applied for emergency certification in teaching exceeded the number of certifications that were awarded to individuals who actually went through teacher, teacher preparation programs. So while we're grateful to have emergency certified teachers because there's no one else to take their place at this point, it's, it's alarming to see that our teacher preparation programs don't have the, the number of applicants and successful, you know, graduates that they used to. So again, really hoping to get some more Teacher Prep Academy students from our high school to apply. Just wanted to give an update. As Haverford will be hosting, we're a part of the ELD Consortium that stands for English Language Development, provides supports for our English learners in a variety of, I believe, nine other school districts in, in the area in addition to Haverford. So Haverford will be hosting the ELD Consortium Summer Camp for our elementary students. So rising first through 12th graders who are English learners will be hosted in Haverford for their English learner summer camp, which will take place from July 10th to 27th. Also very excited to announce the DCIU STEM Summer Camp. I was very inspired by the robotics team, and I hope those of you who have first through fourth graders might consider registering your child for the DCIU STEM Camp. That will take place again from July 10th to 27th. It will be at the Morton Campus. It's $325 per, per week, or $600 for both weeks. If there is a financial barrier, I do know that discussions can be had on an individual basis, either with the principals here or folks at DCIU to come to more agreeable financial terms for families. So again, that's for students in grades one through four. And last but not least, I'm very excited for the Twilight Run on Saturday. I'll be running, trying to beat my most recent 5K time, and my family and I are really happy to also be sponsors at the event. So hope to see you all out there.
No report.
On the legislative side, thanks Dave and Kim for the announcements that you made already. The Delaware County Legislative Council meets monthly at the DCIU and has a representative from each of the 15 school districts in the county. And we seek to engage with the Delaware County Legislative Delegation to share the input regarding the, the potential effects of legislation on our school districts and our students and our taxpayers. The Advocacy Day, PSBA's Advocacy Day tomorrow, there was a prep call this evening, a Zoom call with about 150 people on it, so that's a good sign. The, in Harrisburg, they pretty much have been tied up in appropriations hearings for the last month. So we expect that sometime in the next few weeks, we might actually start to see new legislation introduced and being reviewed in committee. So we'll keep you posted on that. The, we're certainly interested in the governor's budget and what the numbers ultimately will be for regular education, special education, career, and technical ed. And paying special attention to level-up funding, which had been part of the last two budgets, but was not included in the, in the governor's budget this time around. And we're also expecting to see charter reform legislation introduced with an actual chance of being considered in the House Ed Committee this year. So we'll keep you posted. Thanks.
And in no small part is that charter potential legislation due to your advocacy on that issue and leadership across the state to have more equitable, fair funding for charter payments which have vast discrepancies between districts and between the costs that it costs to educate students. Thanks, everybody, for your reports. I really have not much to add because Advocacy Day and Legislative Council were already well-described. Our next, our executive session report. Executive session we had on Thursday, April 13th, 2023. We, the board met with council for confidential discussions related to the potential acquisition of 201 Highland Lane. And we had an executive session prior to tonight's meeting. Board met with council to discuss pending litigation related to the April 13th rescheduled board meeting. The next regular public board meeting is scheduled to be held on April 27th, 2023 at 7:30 PM here in the boardroom of the Oakmont Administration Building. And with that, the business of tonight's meeting is complete, and I'll accept a motion to adjourn. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.